Didn't we Twitch stream it last time, or did we just do it through here?
I don't remember.
Okay, that's what I thought. I'm gonna pull up the stream. That way you get an extra viewer just because I like you. No, but I just heard mommies go la 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 la. So we're live now. No music, just us talking. There was.
So were we going to run in game or just um gibber gab? That's okay. All um I'm working on leveling my little D one warlock. So it's more than a level ten? I can hear you. Does that mean no?
I guess so. How's everybody doing?
Doing good.
Good. How are you doing?
Oh, pretty good.
Sorry, I got a phone call that I didn't even actually mean to answer, but I answered it, which apparently overcuts the rest of this. Hi Metal!
Good evening.
That should be working now. How are the little circus pizzas?
They're going a little stir crazy. But they've been doing good. Taking, being stuck at, stuck at home. Kind of well.
Well, that's definitely a switch for everybody. Except Tahoe.
Yeah, I'm always stuck here. I'm not used to this much attention though, so it's weird.
It's kind of weird, huh?
Yeah, I'm used to being by myself.
Why are you being? It's being really naggy. Our internet's being stupid today.
All of the internet is being dumb.
Well, don't forget, everybody's using it right now too, so. Thursday.
I can hear you guys, I guess, which is the important thing.
Good. Is it, is the audio coming through on the stream as well with the music?
Gosh, it keeps buffering every couple seconds. And it's telling me to go change my settings to take low latency off.
Yeah, I don't know what that's for.
Yeah, there's music in the background and then we're talking over the top of it.
Okay, cool. I just wanted to make sure that that was pulling audio for everything, so I can switch that off.
It says if you have buffering, go to your settings and switch off low latency, but I don't have low latency. Connections, unlock connections, security and privacy. Is that how people are gonna listen in, or how are we gonna respond, interact with the peoples?
Through the Twitch, so whatever, I've got the um, I've got the chat pulled up on my second computer desktop. So then I can see, so like Pioneer just said hi, she just waved, so she's there watching.
Hi Pioneer. Why is low latency not even?
I wanted to make sure we can all get in here before I started. To get too carried away and let everybody know. There we go. Uh Renegade is here. We have, we have five viewers at the moment with our. Tahoe's crackly for me.
I didn't do it.
I thought it might have just been my.
Everyone else on screen. It may be because of, hold on. Cause my audio was separate. Tahoe's audio is bad.
You sound fine to me.
I'm gonna get rid of the music for now. It's buzzy. I heard that when Metal was in here, I don't know why. If it's me or not. Shouldn't be my headset. No, it's not you. They said it's me.
Okay.
Stream chat. Alright, no, bring the chat back. Swarm of bees, you are with a swarm of bees. Deffy, do you know how to turn off low latency? It told me I needed to do it and I tried to follow the directions and then it, you know, didn't respond.
I'm assuming nobody could have, nobody could hear me just a second ago.
You do?
I do not know. I miss factions. I'm just gonna say that, okay?
Hey, you're getting all the stuff for it though, so can't be that bad.
Aw, good bad, I missed uh. I missed uh.
Okay, I'm putting audio on my other ear just to see what's going on.
Maybe Bixx's comment the other night, and he even had a little, he subscribed to my channel again, I missed his little message. Quick edit, quick actions pop out. Yo, I just want the darn sentence.
How about now with my audio better? I'll check it.
Mr. Ghosty Guy and Renegade and Pioneer.
Hello.
Twitch Prime? Should be channels and video connections, maybe connections.
I don't know why mine's being a pain in the ass.
Cause you're the leader.
Well, I got it. Looped correctly, but. Let's try that now, because I know you guys can, you guys can hear me pretty well, right?
Oh yeah, just fine.
Could it be your headset? Could you have a bad headset?
Or can, well, but we would hear the same, wouldn't we?
No, it's not, it's not you guys, it's me, whatever it is.
Security and privacy. Enable additional account creation.
That's the same song.
What same song?
The jukebox is the same song as the jukebox.
On channels. Hide progressive gift or badge. Subscription, hide founder badge. What in the world? I know I turned it off at one point, I just can't remember. Latency mode, low latency. Nope. Turn, hey, does it, does it want me to turn on low latency? Does it want me to leave low latency off?
Let's try this.
Is that better? That would be your channel, wouldn't it? Not my channel? I wouldn't need to turn low latency off to have your channel buffer better. Might just be my crappy internet, I might not be able to do this.
Can't hear myself. Let's. Less bees finally sound like a human, okay. Uh, but you guys can hear me.
Dances did not get any better. Let me just say that.
Deffy says you finally sound like a human.
Who does? Tahoe?
But you guys can't hear me now.
Sound away. Yeah, much better. Who's much better, me or everybody? Or Tahoe? Tahoe, if you're talking, I can't hear Tahoe.
Now they can hear me at the moment. How about now? Oh, you know what I need to do?
This is why we don't do these very often. It probably means we should do them more often.
Second, I need to.
Probably.
My sound siphon. I need to send audio to Discord as well.
So scary. Oh, that's not what I meant to do.
Tahoe's talking right now. Tahoe's talking right now and they can hear Tahoe, but we can't hear Tahoe.
We cannot hear Tahoe.
I gotta send audio to um.
They can't hear any of us. We're a professional streaming conglomerate. We are professional streamable conglomerability. Mister Alex, what's going on? Yes, Town Hall. We administrative people will be discussing the things that are posted in chat up to a certain point, depending on what Ghost Guy decides to post.
What does that mean?
Professional streaming, that's right, Seraphim. So professional. We're the most professional professionals you ever professioned with, role ball.
So Metal, are you still here?
Yep.
Making sure the rest of us are still.
Click the hamburger icon, open preferences dropdown. Blah 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 blah, okay. Something about that. Now I wonder if it would have been better if I would have plugged into my, I could have not used my phone and I could have used my laptop. Plugged a mic into that maybe. Wonder if that would have been better.
You guys can hear, oh, can you guys hear me now?
Oh, we can now.
You're so cute. What, Ghost Guy? My, my ramblings or the fact that we're doing, I won't read half your questions?
Sending it to the stream too? Oh, there we goes. Okay, so now that's, that should be sending to everywhere now.
There, now we're the streaming conglomerate of conglomerables, professional, streamable.
There you go.
So streamable.
Alright, people's in.
So streamable.
People's in chat, can you hear everybody and everything's sounding okay?
There should be four people you can hear. You should be able to hear Mom and me, Thunder and the Deff.
Yes, Deffy says yes, okay.
Uh Metal and. Right, no.
Yes.
Just three of us in here?
There's four of us, you said foe. Metal?
Metal, okay, yeah.
New math.
But we did not invite the Deffy. Alex says he can hear all of us. Low latency hasn't done nothing.
Good, I swapped over.
Swapped over to where?
So when I do audio and stuff like that, I have to uh, when I switch between different scenes, it'll switch.
We are all ad audible. We are so hatable, we're audible.
So he's only sorta audible, okay?
Audable.
Eyes ready. What are we gonna do?
There we go. Okay, now I can get rid of it out of my other ear, because I was listening to the stream at the same time. Ta-da.
There you go.
Hello, hello.
Forbidden Bixx.
Welcome everybody to our first Town Hall of twenty twenty, yay!
Look, twenty twenty, wait, is it almost over?
I kept, I keep seeing a meme saying uh, if mom is willing to slap me into next year, I would gladly take that. Sounds like a wonderful idea.
I saw today, have, has anybody given twenty twenty a Snickers yet?
Yeah, right. Uh, Mr. Alex can hear twenty twenty. I don't think that works that way, but that's okay.
Used to could.
I used to could, think about maybe wanting to learn.
Did I lose everybody?
Nope, we're still here.
Used to could.
Okay. Alright, so Tahoe.
So. I've got the list up on the stream right now, so everybody can see it. Um, they can see who's talking and stuff like that. Um, but I've got the, this was the season of the drifter kind of goals that we had set up for our, I think that was our last meeting that we had. A while back ago.
Probably.
Right, needs, needs to be updated and then change around and, and look to see what doesn't, doesn't apply anymore. What's going on? I know the structure of, the game has changed, um, and then kind of the structure of what we're doing in the clan as well. Too, so. Um, I don't know if you guys have any things you wanna throw out there first, or. Um, cause this is all, like I said, this is all kind of older stuff, so. I figure I go through and we could change stuff, or we can um, start somewhere else and go from there. Looks like everybody can see it too, so that's good. We're up to eleven viewers, we do better than this than when we stream Destiny.
Whatever.
You guys like administrative stuff, I like that. That's very nice, good to know.
I don't understand.
You still, you still there, Thunder?
I said, I don't understand, what do you mean?
Okay, so um, I know when we first started um, doing. Where our last meeting, uh, I think that was.
Alex, no, you are not a hundred percent required to be here. We appreciate people kind of listening in and seeing what's being said. And giving input and asking questions of the four admins on where things are going and heading, but. Your presence is not a hundred percent required. It is preferred and appreciated, but not required.
Yep, 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 yep. Um, we started, I think when we had our last meeting, uh, was when Metal started off with the. Division two stuff, yeah, I think that was almost.
Yep.
Almost a year ago, I think it's, they said the last one was in June or July. But we might have had one in between that was updated that I don't have listed somewhere. Um, but since then, I know we've, we've kind of gone back to our old stomping grounds. Um, I know we picked up the, the Deffy group, um, and they originally had started off as the. Division two group and we've slowly bent them to our will, um, in Destiny two. I can say that out loud. I'm the boss. Anyway.
Have fun with that.
But uh, yeah, no, right? So I guess the question comes down to is whether or not we want to, I don't mind keeping the, the multiple games, stuff like that. Uh, I don't know how much people are gonna play the, Division two, be outside of maybe expansions and stuff that have come out. Um, but I don't mind leaving that stuff in there, because then it gives people places to be able to talk and, and stuff like that, even. You know, I know there's not a crap ton of activity in there, but there still is every once in a while and we still have the bot that. Brings updates in and stuff too for it, so.
Well, I know some of the people are still playing it on and off, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
So that's no big.
There's a few people in there and when that last update went, I know I saw some activity in the Discord channel that people were interested in trying to get fired up a little bit more. And uh.
Yeah.
Had some, and definitely had some piqued interest, so.
I know I talked with, um, let me grab his name real quick. Shoot, it was on here. Uh, Eroden. Death Rice, um, I talked to him, because he was wondering if things had picked up again and. Um, I had kind of been like, no, mm, iffy, uh, kind of yes and no. Um, but I pointed him in the direction of like the uh, bullets and bombshells Discord, which is the Division. Two Discord, because they have some LFG and stuff going on in there. And then uh, I told him about. Uh, Sage's clan, that he, they have a lot of PC stuff, people in there playing and stuff, and then. The official dis, uh, Division two one two, because I, I'm in all of those as well, because I like to keep up on what everybody's doing. Being done. Hey, calm down, relax. If I actually knew what the hell Elder Scrolls were, was, I'd be in those too, but I don't know what the hell of those are, so. But anyways, yeah, so just kind of, and he told me, you know, if, if you do get more people in and playing and doing stuff on a regular basis, let me know and. Cause I don't think we've booted him out of, and Metal might know more than I do, since he's the, the head on that one. After uh, that he got passed back, so. Dramatic gasp.
I um. I think back when. Um, Esella, how do you say her name? I'm sorry if I mispronounce it.
Esola or whatever.
Return leadership over to me, that's when I cut down the, or trimmed down the roster on that. And I think I accidentally cut his.
Okay.
But I sent the invite back out in game.
Right. He hasn't said anything to me, so um, and I told him I would let him know if things did get picked back up or whatever, and. He was happy about that, so. Because he was telling me he's been playing other stuff anyways, so he was going to. Attempt to see what was going on and then go from there, but. I, I think that's kind of what we've talked about before is, you know, unfortunately that game is hit or miss. The first game was that way too, so.
Yeah.
High peaks, low lows.
Yeah, I personally haven't been too pleased with its progress, but that's just my, my own opinion.
Right. Well, I mean, even Deffy has said that before too, I mean. You get a lot in the beginning and then that one fell off fairly quickly, which was surprising, especially for being the second game, but. It is what it is. But I know Mums, you've been posting updates and stuff for the Elder Scrolls uh, channel and stuff like that. Um, I know I booted out, um. What's his name? Do him Prometheus and um.
And that's fine, because they were, they were doing their own thing anyway, so.
I figured as much, so. They stopped responding to me and I, I tried to give him, you know, try to let him know what was going on and I never got back. I know Prometheus lasted longer, because he, he stayed a little bit more active longer than uh, Lady Windblade, but uh. They ended up going their own way and doing their own stuff, so.
Yeah, yeah, I think they just went back to what they were doing before, is.
Yeah.
Kind of what I saw, so.
And that's, I, you know, I.
And that's okay.
Ghost Guy said Division two is, it's good for, but then it goes back to wasteland.
Yeah. Well, the funny thing is, is like, even watching the, the other Discord channels that I'm in with that are Division, it's very much the same thing. Uh, Sage had like two, three, four months where he didn't play Division either, until the new update come out and he was playing. Destiny and any other game that he could get his hands on, so it just, it is the way it is, it's ups and downs. I mean, Destiny has that same thing, but for some reason our lows aren't as low as some of the other games, I don't know why. But yeah, so my plan is to keep those in the Discord for now. Um, they're not bothering anything. If anybody wants other ones, like the um, Call of Duty one or. Anything like that, I can always bring those out of retirement as well, because I still have facts, I still have those buried away. Retired channels and then the Doom channels.
Like Terraria, if we need a Terraria channel for the Deffy crew.
Are you playing Terraria, Thunder?
Me? No. I said for the Deffy crew.
Oh, okay.
The fires play.
I, I don't do Minecraft games, they're, I can't do them.
I figured, I, that's what I was gonna give you shit about, because I know you, you crack down on Minecraft stuff. But uh.
It's definitely not for everyone.
But anyways, okay, um. I was thinking about moving. Some other stuff out, but in the other games channel, because we don't really use much in there at all at the moment. But it's not hurting anybody or anything, it's not bogging anything down, because you, that whole category can be collapsed, so. Which is not, not terrible, so. I mostly keep uh, any of my notifications on and then I go check whatever pops up and. And then I can see what's going on with different stuff, so.
All the random things.
There we go. But yeah.
Okay.
Let me see what else I have connected here. Um, am I honorary at this point, since I don't play D two anymore and suddenly talk to people? No, Alex, I mean, it, you, even just showing up for this, I just like to make sure that people are around. Um, the people that I was talking about before, um, that were playing in ESO and stuff like that with Mums. Um, that, they literally like cut off all communication periods, even if I message them or whatever to say, hey, how you doing? What's going on? How you been? Let me know what's going on. I, I don't ever get a reply back, and that's usually after like. Three months of, of no activity, that's when I'm like, well, they obviously aren't, aren't coming back or saying anything, so. Uh, but even like, if anybody shows up in our Twitch stream channels in the chats or uh, anything like that. I, that just lets me know that you're alive, that you're there, that at least you're, you know, jumping in every once in a while to see what's going on. Every once in a while Vern wakes up and says hi to us, that works just fine with me. She's gonna haunt me. I feel honorary. Yeah. The only one, the only difference is, is that I have um, for the Deffy crew, um, because. Ghost Guy brought in, oh god, I can't, I can't tell you how many people, he's got.
Like five.
Yeah, five or six, I won't, I won't even say it's even more than that.
I, I thought it was six to eight.
Something like that.
Quite few.
Deffy, how many people did, came with you? Alex, no, you're not required, we're not requiring people to be here for, for the, for Destiny, you don't have to. We're not requiring that, we prefer obviously uh, seven, see, in the middle, um. We're just trying to make sure that people stay active and that we are. So that people, so stuff's not just going on, we, you know, we've had, in the past, we've had a couple people join and then completely ghost out, not do anything. Just collect their clan Ingram, because they wanted, part of being a clan, but never wanted to be involved with any. You know, we'd be like, hey, let's go play, let's invite them to stuff, let's try to join their party and things and just never like none. And so, we're not saying you have to play a lot, we're not saying that you have to do something, but we, there should be some sort of communication, just so that we know what's going on. The Town Hall meeting was an idea we came up with, just so that we can kind of let people know what's going on. Like what our thoughts and plans were for a season, or you know, we had talked about doing these a couple times a year or more frequently. a couple of times a year or more frequently, just so that people could see, kind of hear our thoughts. We can sit here and talk about things, discuss things. And then if you say, hey, um like if you popped up in chat and were like, I really think there is a problem that we need to have more than two clan or weekly events, then we'd say, okay, well, let's try to address that and let's go from there. You know, in the past, I've tried to do weekly events that last for couple of months and then they die out and then, you know, do you wanna facilitate something cuz where it doesn't have to be an admin who facility? And so that's kind of we brought into town and uh kind of cover a lot of those various things. Just kind of discuss the state of where everything is, where the state Destiny is, where the state of, you know, we got division ESO. We got people playing all sorts of other stuff. We got um, you know, Venom and some other people are still in Monster World, you know, Monster Hunter world?
Monster Hunter.
Monster Hunter and uh so we have other people in other places and uh who aren't all Destiny anymore and we get that. Uh this last meeting, we decided uh that we were gonna not, we are still a primarily a Destiny clan, but uh you don't have to play Destiny to still be in the clan.
Right.
Um there to be in the discord and to be in the group and stuff, we're gonna we were gonna be we're gonna temporarily, at least for the time being, plan on being a multi um multi game group, group, so.
Well, that was the that's the thing I always I kind of joke about when I do interviews and stuff like that is that I'm like, well, we're we're so- social gaming club and it it really is true. I mean, we have the discord and we set up events and stuff like that in there, but we we bullshit in there a lot of times too. Uh Renegade has a whole chat develop to devoted towards animals and cats and gifts and and stuff like that and it makes people happy. I mean, every once in a while Queen B jumps in there, which is awesome. So it's just giving little places or niches for people to be able to come in and and find people to be like, hey, what's going on or whatever it is. Is he in the vacuum? Please tell me he's vacuuming.
Not yet.
I needed it in my life. Mrs. Tahoe wants a whole page on baby goats. No.
I could go in animals.
Yeah, you could add animals to the baby to the animals channel if you want. You have an account.
She put them all in there.
Oh my god.
She either has to come in and watch on the chat and chat, or she needs to stay out.
Oh, so Thunder says you have to shut up or put pull up the the Twitch stream on the iPad and you can comment in there. She's giving me the bird. I don't like this.
Alright Tahoe, what's actually on the agenda for today?
Alright, so um basically that stuff. I've got a project I was gonna show off in stream as well. It's basically our my the next version of the the app that we use for scheduling and stuff. Um I've to the website that I used to build that originally um was kind of like my stopgap since I didn't know much about the programming side of things. Um I wasn't confident enough to build my own or to try to put something together like that. Um so uh that was really easy to be able to put together. The downside was is that it was kind of expensive to keep it going year to year to year. So uh I figured out and I got some help from my brother on this as well. Um but we were able to build a new version of it. It'll be a lot more simplistic because we basically have to go backwards in order to go forwards, but it would be, it wouldn't cost me anything now, so would be the trade off. Yeah, so and it should be more accessible, so you should be able to use it on a PC as well rather than just on your phone. So it'll be more versatile that way, so. That's one piece that I'm working on for next stuff and then there's some website stuff that I have to deal with because the program I was using for uh publishing the site is no longer updating anymore, so I have to find someplace else to build it in uh which is fine.
Vern wants to know if you've incorporated her current sleep status in the subtle whether or not we can bug her.
Um I'm working on that still Vern.
Working on a burn.
There added it to my important things.
Short long post.
Vern's sleep schedule. There it is. Now it's on the can and now it's on the thing. Okay. So um I know with Destiny uh moving to the season approach with everything. Um we had kind of talked about it. That's why we had a town hall meeting about the drifter season and stuff like that and we kind of came up with a list of things that were uh that we wanted to like do and try to get people to congregate around and stuff like that. Um I think those things are still fairly working. Um I know when we finally got the weekly raid night going. Um that seemed like it was being consistent and that was nice to be able to have. And then doing our cleanup stuff on Tuesdays uh was nice.
Yeah.
Um so that kind of and then this season was a little bit different because the focus was more PvP, which kind of gave us a different place to go in and mess around and then and that was kind of nice to be able to go in uh to do the PvP stuff.
So the problem I see is that there's still a lot of people um who don't really want to chase like trials and I think that like there's two interesting things about this um um this season cuz they kind of split it. So there's a PvP side of things and a PVE side of things for the people who really want something that's not in the um hey Skype um the people who don't want to be in try don't way in crucible, you have the bunkers to really grind for, but it's a to unlock all your bunkers. You're you're gonna be in quite a bit of a grind for a while, but I think we still need to try to find a way incorporate the raid night because there's a lot of people, I would say about probably fifty percent of the people, maybe not quite fifty percent of the people who play on a regular basis would actually prefer not to be in trials or PvP and would prefer to run other event. And so I think that it's important that we remember that we need to obviously the season's still pretty young. A lot. We're in our fifth. I guess we are in our fifth week now. We need to try to figure out a, is that right? Could we just start week five? Three months. So we need to, we need to find a good norm where there's some of us, me um and some others, obviously, who are really interested in trial. I really, I'm so excited. They brought it back. I've wanted to PvP's been the thing I've chased the most in all of in Destiny two since the beginning, so I like that they brought it back, but I think we need to focus on, there are other people um who don't really want to be in there and don't really give two hoots about it, so we need to try to find a way to get a raid group back together for Fridays as well, so that you know, like the last two last two weeks. There's been a group that's run raids or uh to run trials and they've broken off and had their own party so they can get all sweaty and
Yeah.
Talk all tactical and not disrupt everybody, but I definitely think we need to get a raid group going again because there are people who don't want to be or can't be in uh trials.
Well, I know uh we had, we had two groups of trial goers at one point.
Yeah.
Yeah, this last week we did have two, but we still had a a party of like four or five other people who were not doing trials.
Yeah.
And I think that um there's a good number of people who just really aren't that interested.
Well, and I don't I don't blame them because I mean hey, you can look across the community and stuff like that. Most people are not happy with trials and the walk behind not being able to get anything for even attempting to go in there, so uh I don't blame that um. The other thing is that I know uh Renegade has been putting up a couple of events on uh top of our trials uh events into which that I was hoping people would start to do that. I mean, I think that's been my goal from the beginning is to give people the tools to be able to make their own events and start building your own little groups to do stuff with. So I was I was happy to see that pop up when we did the trial stuff is just like, and I think I talked to her about that too. It was just like, oh yeah, make an event to see um for the people that don't wanna do something like that, that can get together and um have something to do. So I'm I'm super happy that she jumped on and and did that, so. Um I'm hoping more stuff like that will come up. I hope um more people will post stuff like that. I know Defi has his group on Thursday that he does uh raids with and stuff and I think he pulled Renegade and Uzi in too, so I'm hoping more spots like that, like if they're looking for somebody to fill a spot or whatever, to use that utility to be able to uh reach more people and stuff like that or see if anybody wants to do something, you know, just just bless you.
Bless you.
Um just give more opportunity and give people the ability to uh or at least hope that they take it upon themselves to start um you know, using that as well as much as we use it for uh making events and stuff like that.
Well, that's that's always been the goal was to have more people doing events, which is why I mean, it's been a year and a half, but I was doing two other events. I was playing a minimum four nights a week cuz I was doing
Yeah.
The two clan nights and then I was doing the knife fall night and a crucible night and it just it got to be you know, I was trying to get other people to do events too, but I was trying to, yeah, just show people that anybody can make an event. We just need to get people to coordinate.
Yeah.
We have people in the raid. Skye's in here saying she'd like to be in trials or the raid. She doesn't care. She wants to be doing higher level activity with people. Wants to be involved. We've got other people who want to raid and Vernus is saying she'd like to be in trials again. Obviously, that's um we gotta get her some caffeine or something so she can stay up with us. Pacific and Alaska time zone people. Defi's saying he can split time. Uh we have enough people to run trials and run a raid. Um.
Yeah.
Pioneer saying she feels like we're back down to a small handful of people using the event, which is true. I feel like like even the last couple of events, like you've we've only had maybe four people use it and sign up.
Yeah.
Um.
Well, that's that's a product of things that are going on in the world and a product of, you know, the game being in this.
Bottling and sending energy.
It's a a product of
Oh, energy drinks. Never mind. My bad. I misread that. I misread that.
Thanks, Alex.
But I definitely think there's enough people. We still, we have enough active people that we could on a Friday have a raid team and one to two trials teams easily. We have enough people regularly in Friday night for the later folks um who get on for which is the Pacific time zone. Um. I definitely think that um we have enough people that we have nine people on. I would say most, there are definitely some weeks uh where it's low, just like there's some Tuesdays, we've had fifteen people in the chat, which you know, is a lot, but it's awesome to have all those people in there. The average though, Tuesdays are normally a little mellow. And then Friday is normally when we get more on and we I would say consistently are getting nine nine-ish people in there.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, unfortunately, we have something that helps interfere, so we're not able to contribute like you know, we originally did, so.
But even that, I mean, you're you're on, you're playing, you're joining chat and stuff like that. So I mean, that those things all matter in this this kind of ecosystem, whatever it is that we're we've got going here, so. Um and then, you know, when you can get on, you do stuff with people and whatever it is, so. Um I know I've tried to gear some of my stuff towards um helping people run through things or do stuff because that's that's a lot of fun to be able to go do those things and I think we've done um you know, compared to what we've have written down from before and stuff like that. I think we've done better about um picking up and doing a bunch of different stuff with people and and making more opportunities for different stuff. Um I think the the uh crucible thing that we did, was it two weeks ago? Uh the private match? That was probably the funnest thing I've done in a while. Uh that was hilarious. And we were just kicking it, which was awesome. I know uh Sky has kicked around the idea of doing like a strike race um idea as well. And uh I like that idea and I wanna try it at some point. I just need to figure out, I need to build the structure for it. And then figure out how to um implement it because it's a I don't wanna say a little bit more intense, but it has more pieces than just going in and digging around in private matches, so. Um I
Well, for the strike one, I think the most Sky is saying she would help you um. Seraphim is saying mums helps him out even just by telling about things.
Exactly, so.
I think uh with Sky, um yeah, strike speed runs, Alex. We've talked about doing like setting up like three or four fire teams. And then you pick the strike and everybody runs it and sees who can run it the fastest.
Mm-hmm, or having even a consec- a few strikes in a row or she was saying a marathon of D one strikes. And then see who comes up with the best time. Like golf, yeah.
So a couple of options.
Lowest score wins. I like it. But I mean, there there's those cool fun ideas that I think are are there that we could have fun with and do stuff with. I know the way the content comes out, um especially this season is we get the uh one week of new content or basically like a the thing opening up uh on Tuesday um and then the next week is kind of like their bi-week, their off week, and then something new comes out the week after. So it's every bi-weekly, something new comes out, so. I'm assuming next week will be probably just continue to upgrade your bunkers and then the following week they'll have a new exotic quest to chase or something like that that'll um Guardian Games and those kind of things will be coming out like that too, so it's finding where to put those those extra fun things in in between those uh pieces of new stuff that are coming out and things that people wanna get done. Or flawless runs. Yeah, Guardian Games is coming. Next week is Iron Banner and then I think the week after that is Guardian Games. So.
Yeah, Alex, we've talked about doing several different things with D that we, I mean, it was probably six months, maybe a little longer done. We've gone back and done D one stuff. We did a raid. Um but as far as like a raid races we have
We did sparrow racing.
We did sparrow.
We did do sparrow racing. We did go back and do sparrow racing. Trying to get Remy to come back. And then uh so we've done a little bit. We've tossed around the idea doing once a month, getting together and doing a one raid stuff and we it hasn't really been implemented or talked about super seriously, but it has been something that's been brought up and we've
Right. Well, I think most people wanted to get back into doing the weekly clan raids, so that was the main push there and so getting that up and going was just like, cool. Um and now we can start looking at maybe doing some other stuff. I'm not sure what kind of, since we don't know what comes after this season, we don't know if we're gonna have downtime. We don't know if we're gonna have I'm assuming they're gonna go back with the same model, a whole another set of seasons. They haven't said that they're making a D three, so.
I don't believe they're doing that yet.
I doubt it too, but I'd with new consoles coming out at the end of the year too, I did, there's a lot of I don't knows happening there too, so. We'll see, see what happens and what what downtime we have in between as well. I know this season has been less exciting than the other ones, so.
We talked about guys and it's definitely something we can do. I know, so like Tahoe was just saying recently, it was m- most recently, it was people really wanted to get back in. We wanted to do our raids as much as possible, even even since our last town hall meeting, it became even more season, we got to where we were really pushing that every Friday and I think having um having uh someone who's been able to accomplish a few more raids has definitely helped us with that cuz that's kind of been our struggle in the past as we just don't have. Having, uh, someone who's been able to accomplish a few more raids has definitely helped us with that, cuz that's kind of been our struggle in the past, since we just don't have any really. Any really experienced readers, so not to put Ghost Guy on the spot, or the Defy Clan, folks who have come in. Um, the sub clan, the sub defy clan, but they have definitely, uh, helped us with that.
A lot, yes.
Being able to come in and give direction where we have guys who just don't have, you know, we've gone in and we tried to do stuff, but we haven't been able to successfully do it. And so I think that's been our big focus, this season it's been trials and everybody's trying to level up to a thousand and get their bunkers done. Um, we kinda haven't hit the point, normally the first two to three weeks, maybe even four of a season. Everybody's kinda like power grinding, trying to get their power up and trying to hit those numbers, um. And then this season, it's been a little bit longer, just because of the way that they've done things and the bigger that we had. And the higher capability, I think, of getting higher, so I think it's taken a little longer, but D, D stuff is always something we talk about. And it's kind of on the table, but like I said right now, I think people still really wanna raid, Sky, like even you were just saying, so doing a, a once a month D one. Not a bad idea at all, uh, definitely something we want to look into and kinda keep up with. Um, as an idea and maybe, maybe try to implement that, but as of right now, I think, uh. That's probably not gonna be an immediate thing, but it would not be difficult to implement by any means.
Right, Defi said there's some, them sun, sunsetting weapons too, so removing things that are pushing stuff around too.
Sunsetting weapons is September or August.
Something like that, yeah, they're just, it's gonna change the way. That we approach the game and, and stuff like that, and how things work and, and, and stuff like that, so.
Yeah.
Things will be changing.
Yep, that'll definitely cause some issues for sure.
I know I've.
To the sandbox.
I felt like I've, I wanna get my bunkers upgraded and stuff like that, but I feel like I, I gets. Hardly any bits for doing anything, and I, I real, and then, then when they read the twab today and it was just like, oh, we're only in one day, I'm like. Why am I freaking out, I'm more than halfway upgraded on all of my, uh, bunkers, I'll get there before the end of the, the thing.
I'm not.
Keep getting, keep being crazy about it. Crucible gives a lot, that's the thing, is like, I, I played four matches of the, um. The rotating playlist one, I can't remember which one it is this week, but it's the one where you do more damage to everybody. And I got four matches and I got twenty-six, and that's all, and I was like, I should be getting twenty-six every like two matches, not. Every four, which seems a little rough, yeah, momentum, that's what I was running in. Um, but I also ran to the forge and tried it in there, and I, I think it's ten I got in the forges. Uh, but the forges are a shit show to do by yourself, because the blueberries that are in there doing it are terrible. I don't know what, what the heck they're doing.
Blueberry.
Yeah. So, um, I know with the last, the IO bunker, if you get the, um, the one. If you get it upgraded to the point where you get bits for completing public events, that also includes the public event, um. The event, event, the bunker event on IO as well, you get bonus on top of that as well. Menagerie works if you're hunting for weapon rolls, yeah. Make sure you get that upgrade in the bunker though, cuz then you'll get bits for completing menagerie as well. That's boot and bounties, yeah. It just feels so much different than some of the other events that they've done where. You could literally just run around and shoot and kill things, and you were getting the materials you needed for. Whatever it is you needed to turn in, so, uh, feels a little bit more restricted this time.
Yeah, they've just made it where you have to work for it a little more, so that.
Guess, kind of for everybody in the chat, is besides doing raids and trials or comp. If we're, if there's no trials happening, is there anything else that is kind of like. Are, are people struggling with, I know doing like, looking at the old list, we've got escalation protocol here, are people needing help? Getting through the, um. Uh, that event that Tahoe just talked about.
Serif towers?
Serif tower.
Serif towers, thank you.
Are we having issues with the serif towers, or are people being, find, being, finding that they're able to get enough of those done? Um, it seems a lot like escalation protocol, where.
Oh, yeah.
Um, very similar, kind of, a, a little, maybe a little simpler, but, uh, not, but not any easier at the same time.
Yeah. I agree, I think the second one on the moon was a little bit easier, because the enemies were more linear. Compared to the first and the second one, where they tend to jump over you or teleport in or invisible or whatever it is, and. And I know it's frustrating to, I know we were having troubles with that, those idiots would jump over top of you and you wouldn't see them. And it wouldn't count, you clearing the, the stupid thing, it's a pain in the butt.
Alex says he knows nothing about anything going on in D two right now. Pioneer would like weekly Nightfall pinnacle runs, hundred, hundred K runs again, um. Seraphim was trying to run for these to get the Le Monarch and the other one, but haven't played in a couple of weeks.
Uh, Yoden definitely with the.
So we can definitely, like, I know there's enough, like, looking, kinda reading the, through those comments, and then just looking through Tahoe's notes here, like, we've got. Whisperer of the Worm, we've got Outbreak Perfected, we've got, you know, there are still, um. A lot of people who need stuff that we can run through, like I was just talking, we were talking, I think on Tuesday, um. No, I don't think it's still broken, Alex, um, that, you know, I. Data commented also again, it was like, hey, I need to prestige, uh, to get the. Fully upgrade your, uh, legendary, oh, there's prob, we're close to two raid teams of needing that, I know we've. Probably got four or five people who need the, just to run the raid normal and get the, uh, crests or orbs, whatever they are. And then after that, you know, we'll have twelve people who need to run prestige raids to complete their like backrace, we've got people who. Uh, are looking, trying to finish their whisper, people who are trying to get the catalyst for their whisper, we have people who are trying to finish the ship. So we've got a lot of people in a lot of different stages, you know, I don't have divinity, or I don't xenophage. And I think that that's kind of something else we can look at it, just, um. Like, I think we, we kinda started to a month or so ago, I, I started in the Destiny chat, it was just like, what do people still need to complete? What's on your wish list to get out of your in, your quest, and I know like, I know we've, uh, we've knocked off a few of those, Phantom got a couple of guns. Phantom got his Leviathan and a few other things, um.
Well, we've run several people, even the, the new guy ran through and got him perfected and stuff like that, uh, was gonna get him through to do outbreak. Or not outbreak, but whisper and stuff it too, so I mean, there's a lot of stuff that we've gone back and, uh, rounded off for a lot of people as well, especially. Especially our, uh, our people that come back and do stuff all the time, uh, even the people that show up every once in a while, we've gone through and. And got them through, uh, a bunch of stuff as well, so I think we've done fairly decent at. Um, having times and slots open for things that we've done, or, you know, even when people come into clan nights on Fridays or whatever, and be like, hey, I wanna do this. Be like, yeah, I'm, we, we're gonna do that, nobody, no big deal.
Well, and I think like Ghost Guy just commented, depends on what people want to accomplish, and I kind of feel like, that's kind of been the theme of this season in a lot of ways, and I'm not sure why that is, but it. Feels like this season has been a lot of, for lack of a better term, cleanup, we're all working on our bounties for the, for the war mine bits. Everybody's kinda got their, their group of bounties, and I think that, um, Archangel's happy to be, have been.
He ran through drunk stuff, who, was it random who was just sitting in a corner?
Very helpful.
And somebody, and Defi and somebody else ran in and got him something, I saw the clip of that on Xbox, that was funny. Self-inflicted challenges are fun too.
But I feel like, uh. With only close combat weapons, yeah, no, there's a lot of ways we can change some stuff up, but I feel like that's kind of been the, uh, story this. Season is people just kinda being like, hey, I wanna accomplish this thing and clean, kinda, for lack of a better term, clean up their checklist or. Kinda clean out their inventory a little bit, and I feel like that's been a really common, um, thing that's been happening.
Yeah, well, and that's not a bad thing, I mean, I think every once in a while we need that, cuz if it's.
What did I do?
If it's constantly, you know, new stuff, new stuff, new stuff, new stuff, we never get a chance to go back and finish anything.
Well, yeah. Well, and that's why I'm, um, modifier and I are actually, I wanna go through and clear out all this stuff with Iris that's all been left behind.
Right.
You know, because we ran after the Vex, and then we ran after the next thing, and now we're running, um.
Yeah.
Because whatever comes in the future is gonna be tied to that ship.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
And yeah, I never finished that quest either.
And I, I want that story stuff finished, because I want to, um. Have all the pieces in place for whatever's gonna happen.
Right.
So. I know other people might've got it all done, but we haven't.
Right, well, I mean, I think there's a few people that haven't either, um.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it, it's just, it just depends on what people wanna do, I know I'm gonna keep doing the Tuesdays and the Friday nights. Uh, at the same time, I'm just gonna keep the consistency of that up, um, I. Know every once in a while, I can jump on during the day, if somebody needs help, I can, I can convince the, the family to. Let me jump on for.
It's harder now that his wife's home.
I, it's, well, I mean, it's that and like, Uzi messaged me yesterday, when I was on in the middle of the day. And he's just like, hey, what you up to, and I'm just like, I'm just trying to clean up some stuff real quick, um, while being on homework duty with the kids. Cuz there was, you know, if they had questions, whatever, I needed to be able to put down the controller and go help with. Your computer problems, or, you know, help with math, or whatever it was, I think my daughter was doing science and stuff like that too, so. I know those things have changed too, so it's, it's making, making sure all that works out and stuff too, and then. Being available for certain stuff.
Yeah.
Well, and that's one thing too, I was wondering how much that's affecting everybody, I mean, it doesn't affect us too much, but it affects. A lot of, a lot of everybody else that's, you know, they're with work and working from home and being.
That's one of the things right now, these last couple of weeks, people have had a lot more time.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think there's a lot of more people who are having a lot of time, and so we're seeing. Especially a shortage of time, or a shortage of things to do, because people are being able to play more.
Sky wants a quarantine clan night.
But I think that, what?
Cuz Sky wants a quarantine clan night. Uh, you know, I thought about it, because I've been doing, because of, uh, my family and stuff's all close in here, we're, we're used to seeing each other. Uh, we've been doing a lot more like FaceTime calls with everybody and, and coming up with ways to play games with everybody and stuff like that, so. Like on Saturday, we're, are planning on doing like a bingo night with everybody and having like ten or twelve people on FaceTime doing that. Um, if something like that would be fun to do with people, or having, uh, an option to do something that's. Not in this game, but something fun that we can do, I mean, I know everybody has fun rolling the dice in the chat for. Our ARG that we play in real life, which is hilarious to me all the time, but. Even something like that would be fun to do that, uh.
Jackbox party pack night.
We could do that, I mean, that would work, I've tried it a couple of times with over FaceTime and stuff like that, it doesn't work as well, I've tried it on, um. Zoom as well, and it's, hmm, I mean, playing it on over Xbox would be much better, but that would give us something to, you know, shake off the. Quarantine jitters that we're all getting too, so. Mums is the only one allowed to go outside, I don't like it.
Do you need to do some more prop hunt?
Yeah.
That's funny.
But.
And that's the thing, I mean, we can get together, and there's some, enough people playing other games, we could get together and do another. Two, or we could do a, like, a temporary third clan night if Tahoe can get permission, otherwise we wonder that somebody else could instigate it. Um, would be to run a third clan night and just be like, hey, people are gonna be on it this time, um.
Oh, Alex gets to leave his house, fuck you, Alex.
Wow, Alex. Can you bring me a pizza?
Oh.
I like garlic on my pizza. And meat, meat and garlic, garlic.
Meat and garlic.
I get to leave mine too, so angry.
So I know this game that you can go in as a group and, and capture castles.
Oh, no.
Should've kept my mouth shut.
I had to say it, I had to say it.
Someday I'll get back onto my character and I'll be like, what was I thinking, and delete all of them.
Yep, yep, you will, cuz you'll be, have to start all over again by the time you get back in.
I don't have any of the new updates, I haven't had an update since before.
Well, it's a whole new thing, you'd have, you'd have to do a lot, so, I'm just giving everybody a hard time, I know it's not for everybody.
Wants us all to go in and play E S.
I wanna go.
That's always her.
Stay in the clan, you have to go download E S O.
That's always her pitch though.
The rest of you do.
That's hilarious.
This is like advertisement for her right now.
Ghost Guy, since he wants to start a whole channel about Terraria.
Terraria?
Reach about E S O.
E S O. Alex said, oh, man. And Defi run raid night, don't wanna, don't wanna play Terraria or don't wanna do, so.
He don't wanna do E S. She's so kidding though. Oh, those are ninety-seven.
Kid, but really, you're serious.
No, actually, no.
Probably true.
Funny.
Unless it's the first one, then we don't need his help, or the second one, I guess the first two, we don't need his help.
Hmm.
His direction, let me rephrase that, we don't need direction on the first two.
He's assisted?
No, Sky, I got that, I would, you, I was saying we could do a third night.
Good, I, I couldn't do it.
Nevermind, I understand what you meant, a Defi run raid night, not Tuesday or Friday, my bad.
Oh, gotcha. I know he runs Thursday, we can always shoot for a different night, he runs Thursday with his, his, uh, bros, sips. His, uh, whole, uh, his xenophage group, yeah, um. So. I would be happy to set something up for him if he wanted to do something like that, but. And I, I think that comes down to like what people wanna try to do themselves or whatever, cuz he was, he was an acquisition. Uh, of another clan, basically absorbed into ours, kind of idea.
Oh, Tuesdays when they run, gee, get it right.
Yeah, they run Tuesdays or Thursdays, they don't always do the exact same day.
Tuesdays, I thought you were running on Thursday, not Tuesday.
Mm-mm.
Also, I was surprised you were here, I was just like, running raids right now, you guys have talked about Thursday. Are we gonna be doing division night again?
Arc, we brought up, uh, briefly division, there's just not a lot happening in there right now. Are you, are you looking to do a division night, are you looking to see metal, are you doing, are you pretty active in? Division still, or what, what, I guess, on the division side of things, what are you seeing right now?
I, I haven't been very active myself lately.
Okay, yeah, Arc, I think there has been just not a lot of activity in Division two currently.
And that's across the board too, not just here.
Pretty regularly?
We're gonna leave the channels in the Discord as well and stuff like that, but it's. It doesn't seem to be, you, like I was saying before, even in the other, um, Division two discords that I'm in, it's still pretty low. Activity going on. I've been thinking about jumping, jumping back on. Clan Night X, Defying Dad Ho, ding, I like the names, Sky, but it hurts a little bit.
Yeah, Arc, um I, I just, I haven't seen much activity in there. I know I saw poking around in there a little bit and uh I actually just had somebody buy me he does Division Two, so I just started a character and stuff and it was pretty like not I don't know, it was uh not very busy at all. So.
Okay, my computer crashes. Just let you guys know, it may or may not happen.
Your computer's gonna crash?
Okay, no, it didn't. So we're good. I'm just warning just in case.
It hurt a little bit.
Trying to pull up something else right now. Yeah, no, I mean, that's
Nope, you're good, Archangel. I'm just trying to, that's what this is here for. That's why we wanted to open it up for discussions. I've been trying to, I've been following along the chat. My stream isn't working with beans, but skipping every two seconds, but I wanted this up so that we can make sure we're paying attention to what everybody's saying.
Yeah.
Um, and make sure that we uh
Was we, we talk to people in, in party chats and on Xbox and stuff like that, but that doesn't necessarily, we mean, we get to talk to everybody or hear people's you know, ideas or what they wanna do. So we, that's why we continue to try to do these as often as we can so that gives more opportunity to say something or put something out or, you know, whatever it is. Questions, comments, concerns, um xenophage things, whatever. That's for you, Deffy. How awesome it is.
Kinda likes using you as a ventriloquist puppet. I failed, by the way. You were gone.
I, I appreciate uh being Sky's voice when uh when need be. I do that.
Please stop. Uh, I don't know. What's next on your list there, boss man?
Um, we could go talk about recruitment and stuff. I know that's been um with, I think we've lost four in the past couple of weeks, uh two and then two more. And I think uh one more a couple of days ago. So that's five. And I think only
What time do you guys normally play?
Actually in the uh
What zone I guess do you guys line up the most with? Cause I know we do have quite a few East Coast people. I know uh Dead Eye runs at all sorts of crazy times now. He runs later than I do. A lot of time stays up later than most of us, but what time, what times are you guys norm? Yeah, Arc, anytime you're, we just want sure, you know, you don't have to be playing games even we know you're around. You know, the only people who are getting booted just completely fall off the map and disappear.
Yeah, I haven't heard from some people for over three months and then I'll send them messages and ask them, you know, hey, what's going on? And then when they don't call, you know, don't, they don't call me back. I, that's when I boot them.
Sky, there, we have a max capacity in Destiny at a hundred.
Hundred.
But we don't have a max capacity for Division. And so like some of the people who aren't in, you're not required to be a Destiny mem- uh Destiny person to um be in the Division. So um but we're, we're, we're able to do a hundred people in, in that Destiny Xbox. Clan.
The big thing about that is that um we need to have people that are willing to step up and coordinate stuff for the different time slots. If we bring in people, you know, from the different time zones, cuz otherwise the problem we end up with is that the core of us run later and then uh the other people kinda wing it when they can get on and there's nobody around to help pull stuff together for them to get stuff done.
Yeah.
And I um other than people willing to step up and do that, I don't know how to solve that.
Yeah. Well, and I think that we have enough people who play at that Eastern and uh Central um times um. So I think that there's some if we could get a couple more East Coast uh people, it would potentially help um East Coast Central to help some of the people. Um, but with Deffy's crew in here and with them being stuff, I think that there's definitely a lot more possibility and availability playing than there has been in the past. Um, but we've gotta still, it's the same issue. We gotta get s- some people who want to kinda step up and be hey, everybody come. It's kinda like whenever I get in game for a little while, the first thing I do is I look at who's on. Go through and invite everybody to a party. That way people are know it's available. Um and uh and everything. You change that Deffy protocols back, you little bastard.
Alright, it's gone. I thought it was funny.
Thunder protocols, remember?
I don't have, I have a pizza protocols. I don't have a thunder protocols one yet. I need to get that going.
Wait, you did Deffy protocols before you did thunder protocols? I am actually a little fender right now.
You, yeah, he was starting an uprising as most DPS people do, so. Yeah, I feel like we're the clan of uprisings is what we technically should be.
So anyway, talking about recruiting is why I brought up what I said.
Yep.
Because if you recruit, are you going to um recruit all time zones?
I would like to.
Are you gonna try and recruit certain ones?
I would like to keep doing that. Um, I looking at the landscape and how um cuz I, I, I do go and browse the uh Bungie forums and stuff like that as much as I can. I don't go onto the Reddit anymore. Um but uh it's, I mean, there's still a lot of clans out there, but there's a lot more that are very similar to what we are now that uh have, I don't know if they they watched my previous posts before and they kinda mimicked what I did cuz that's, that's kinda what I did, but they're very much worded very similar to what I've had posted before. So a lot more casual groups, a lot more, you know, openness about doing stuff and and things like that. Not as much rigid standards as far as you have to have this many clears. You have to have this ELO or whatever it is, so. Um, I, I wanna get back in there and try to see what's going on and in um, pick up some more people. Uh, I wanna figure out how that's gonna work with my schedule and stuff like that, for sure. I still interested in like acquisitions of people that want to be more in a leadership role. Um, too, I'm not quite sure how to find people like that or how do you um you know, look for people like that. So who
I think the, the problem is you can't really look for somebody to come in and be a leader.
Well, I, I figured that as much, but
That because if you're like, hey, we want you to come in and take over the East Coast time zone. Then they're gonna come in and be like, hey, I'm taking over the East Coast time zone and all. Who the crap are you and what do you make you do? I think that's how I would react. Some dude came in and was like, hey, I'm taking over for the Alaska time zone people and dude, shut the heck up and get out of here.
But that's, that's the dynamic that we're kind of rub up against. Uh, I mean, if you look at the bigger groups and stuff like that, that's, they kind of run stuff like a business where it's just like, oh, here's your new manager. Blah, blah, blah. Deal with it, bullshit. Um, and we're still small enough that we don't, we still don't have that. Um, I don't see us getting to that point, but that is you know, where we're rubbing up against is like, do we take that next leap to be kind of that disconnected um
Good luck, Vern.
Business model or do we stay small?
You have a meeting.
Our, our numbers will still stay small.
See to have somebody, people, finding people within our group that want to step up and help the group.
Right.
I'm not a fan of bringing in people that aren't a part of our group. And that may not even have the same philosophies that we do and then find that out after they're doing stuff.
Right. Well, and that's why I was, I was thinking about um like I don't wanna say like Deffy's group because I was totally different, but um acquiring smaller groups that are already um together um and bringing those groups in because then they kind of have a little bit of establishment, but it gives our
My group.
Our numbers on Bungie on net a little bit of a bump so that we look like we have, and we do have more people in and playing and doing stuff. Um, but then it gives us more time zones for people to be able to hopefully connect together. Cuz that's the whole thing is, is like we can't force people to play together, but we're hoping that their times kind of happen to brush past each other in the middle of the night and they're like, hey, oh, hey, what are you do, come join, you know, those kinds of stuff. They use yeah, unintentional meetings kinda stuff.
So you're saying you wanna find a clan of like four to five people and invite them to come in and be part of sub clan in the dungeon protocol family.
Kind, kind of, kind of see what the how uh cuz I've seen some of the other absorption uh posts on uh on B net and stuff like that. I thought it was an interesting idea because it's making a
It definitely be worth putting it out there. I mean, if, if the people are posting that, hey, we're looking forty who have about fifteen, twenty active members and we're looking to uh yeah, pick up some people specifically in the Eastern and Central time zones to be a little more active. Uh, we have a couple of events we do weekly, blah, 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 blah. Posted that. I mean, there's no harm in doing that. It's the worst case scenario. Some guy comes along and he's like, hey, come, our clan wants to absorb you. Well, we don't really wanna do that to keep our name, keep our identity. We don't wanna change, but we wanna bring in a few more people. I think that that doesn't seem like I mean, why not post that? If we're, if you're gonna do a recruitment post, it might as well make it something like see and then they can come in and we can play around and play together a little bit. Make them play with Deffy, make them play with me, make them play with some of the other people and you know, make them play with the, a variety of the folks we have and um go from there.
Right. And I mean, I, the thing is, is like even when we were at thirty, anywhere from thirty to forty. Uh, we were getting propositions for that as well. Hey, we're a clan of fifty or sixty. Uh, we would like to absorb you into our group. Would you like to do that? This is like I, I didn't think we were that small. I mean, in groups of ten or less, I would say, yeah, absorption, but um, but that's when I was thinking about that idea and then seeing more of those posts on there. This is like, oh, this is interesting idea and looking at like what Sage has set up. He has his main clan there, but there are other groups that are in there that are playing together and, and stuff like that. So it's very similar idea in that same way. You know, this is obviously just for myself, but just adding a mention that we're welcoming
Prime.
Uh LGBT plus players would be cool. That is a possibility too, Sky.
Wait, I missed something. What?
My concerns are my small clan and then majority of them never playing with us. Well, that's, that's the trade off too. I mean, and that's why the, when uh Metal came up with the idea of with the division recruiting was uh pull, 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 and then weed out the ones after that. It was an interesting idea. It made our numbers go way up. Um, which was great. And then we are slowly sloughed off any of the ones that didn't really wanna stick around. Um, so the idea is which, which path is the best, best way to do it cuz when me and Mums were doing it before, um, it was a definitely a lot slower. Um, but the players seemed more stable, I would say, uh as far as staying around and being active for a longer period of time. Um, but I'm not sure, looking at the actual data that I've collected from um the activity log and stuff like that, it seems to be about the same. So we've gained a bunch of people and then we sloughed off some, but we ended up with the same amount of um I think we're at forty eight members now. Cuz of the other ones.
Yeah, well, cuz we had, we had a bunch of people and then, I mean, life happens. People aren't able to play.
Yeah.
They fall out of the game. You know, and then you bring in more people. They take their place and it's this rotation of of people. But so if you did, um, you could put up a little post and saying, hey, you know, um
Yeah.
And uh if, if you're a, a group of people but don't have, I don't know what you say, small, a small group looking for a larger group to join or something. Um
Cuz there's a lot of like
Friendly, sociable and
Two and three men clans out there and anything below ten, which I mean, there's a lot of those out there that are still struggling to do things and get things together that would benefit from joining a bigger group and
Forty five members currently.
Forty five, okay.
Maybe um
I do like adding the
The uh
Your suggestions.
Defy group could give you some clues on maybe what could be said in a post that might interest people looking in since that's what they did, even though they came for Division. They still had to make that choice to join us in.
No, that's a good point too. That's a good perspective as well. And I know I wanna, uh, I want Metal does. I think I still have the post on the Reddit as well. I wanna go look at those again. I know I rearranged the, the website to uh re- reflect what our current recruitment status is as well. So it's just about figuring out what we wanna um put out there and how how it's gonna work. I know if Deffy won, I, we do have a um, a sub admin position that I created when um shit, I can't remember his name now.
Healing Bear?
Yes, thank you. When Healing Bear was here, um, that is available. So it's not the, you don't have to be uh there for recruitments or anything like that unless you want to, but it gives you kind of that that same role where you have if anybody needs anything or questions occurring, kind of basically what you're doing now, Deffy, where if people need stuff, you'll run them through it. It's just that um there's just that structure that we have there. Yeah, and then, then you have access to throw around ideas and stuff in the uh admin pending members uh channels that, that when we talk about certain stuff or set certain things up or whatever it is and it gives us one extra hand when we're dealing with issues and, and stuff like that too. Does that mean I get paid? Yes, you get a, a fat check at the end of every month.
Yep.
Yep, yep, yep.
That was not fat chick. That was fat check and it's also a lie.
I never lie. I never lie. Half of nothing is still nothing, right? You are a great accountant.
Pioneer, I think Pioneer, you, you're right, kinda, but and in some ways you can look at the defy group in, in the same way, like none of them play with us except for Ghost Guy, but then at the same time they like taking Uzi in. And you guys have got to play with Vendetta. I was in there one time. For like an hour before he fell asleep or had to go, so cuz um
Well, I'm glad Sky.
There is definitely some concern about that happening. And yeah, if we were like brought in a group of six people and then after like three months, nobody had heard from two of them and we were like, alright, let's boot them. I think they might get um, and that, that is definitely something to think about. And so
Well, that's, I mean, I've talked with Deffy about that because I've, I'd kinda told him, I said, um, and uh I told him this, I was like the way I see your guys' group is you all came in um as a unit. So I pulled you as a unit. So you um work as a unit. So your, your numbers stay in our group.
He said it's, it's the time. For them, it's the times that we play so much later than the rest of them because the rest of them are playing so much earlier than we are. We're getting on. I'm getting on, you know, I get, I know we're normal groups to get on because for us, we're so far behind everybody and like our kids are aren't, our kids aren't even in bed for another thirty minutes. And then uh then for that. And so we're not on until seven o'clock our time, which to us is normal, but to those, to the like, to defy group. Um like he just said, most of them are getting off cuz for them it's midnight or late.
Exactly.
Right.
Or around midnight. And so they've already been playing for four or five hours, which Or around midnight and so they've already been playing for four or five hours, which is how long I normally, I normally play, four or five hours and then I'm done for. And so I think that that's kind of the issue with that east coast thing and so to for Pioneer's point of view, if we're trying to get more people to play in the east coast time zone, then maybe it wouldn't be a bad thing. Because they have brought in like they've played with Uzi, they've played with Renegade, they've played with other people. Um and I know that they've been open to other people joining them and I, they've had various people that they've run stuff with at those earlier time slots.
Yeah.
And so I'm not trying to speak negatively about the defy group and that's not, I am, that's how. Did I apologize uh to all defy people everywhere. That was defiers, not defilers, just to clarify. Um but so I think that there's a lot of positivity like with bringing in a small group and um. I think for the east coast time zone people, you know, you've got. Got um people who are trying to look for people to play with earlier, so if you could bring in a small group of four or five people. Who are already consistently playing at those earlier times, that'd be great for them. It wouldn't really affect anything for us and you know what? Hopefully they'd be more active in Discord and we'd get to see them and kind of get to know them like we have with. Um Ghost Guy and uh some of the other people, you know, that have come in, you know, Kane has come in and been historically was really active. We have had people who come and be really active. We get to know them pretty well and unfortunately a lot of them, you know, kind of gone away, but. Life happens and that's just kind of life like, but like Archangel just said, he's been in here and we've played with him quite a bit uh previously and. Um. Enough if only a few will be playing to bring in small clan. I'm not referring to the defy group, just future small clan absorption.
Well, that's the thing is like.
By clan has worked out well, but I don't know that is what we should always expect.
No, and that's. That comes with everything, that comes with anybody that we is, whether it's an individual or a group, that's the same same idea.
Yep.
Um we'll have people that we bring in and then all of a sudden. They won't make it to the end of the the trial period and then I'll have to boot them, so it's that's.
It's only happened like twice.
Yeah, that's a few more times than that, but it's hit or miss no matter what we do. Um what I was trying, what I'm trying to get is is we have a system set up in the Discord and um. On Bungy Dune Net and stuff like that where you go, you play, you get rewards and those rewards are kind of shared amongst all everybody. Um so smaller groups that are that can come in and do stuff, they benefit from it, we benefit from it. Um there's a possibility that we could mesh groups together, so that might give defy group a few more. Uh people that are on earlier that they could pull from as well or, you know, vice versa, it just. The idea is is if the, if the tools are there, so if if Defi wanted to do like the. Sub admin position and start putting stuff together, he has the tools and stuff available to start. Putting groups together and doing things that he wants to do uh uh under the DPS, you know, banner kind of idea. Uh and that gives him more resources to be able to pull from and stuff like that, so it's. It's all the.
Ghost Guy asked if he had tools, I told him not yet. We haven't sent you your offer letter yet and sign your life and buddy.
Yeah.
Toolbox.
But no Pioneer, you're right. I think that there's a lot of fit, uh but it's definitely something to think about and I think. You know, we went through a period where we just invited a bunch of people in and well, a bunch of people didn't work out. You know, so then that's when Tahoe got a little more selective and I think that if we use that same selectiveness. That our chances of success obviously go up, so. But at the same time, we've had when we added in a bunch of people and kicked a bunch of people, we had some good ones that stuck, so I mean, it's gone both ways.
Yeah, and that's the risk though, that's the.
Point out that the defy group is all was, you know, um they're the second small group that was absorbed into here. Cause our group worked out pretty well too and there were.
Debatable, what do you, what do you consider worked out? I mean. Take over, I would say.
You have Mums and you got Pioneer and you got. Positive, you got me, which was a negative, but you got three big positives. I would say that's a positive overall.
Let me talk about him. I I consider modifier positive.
Modifier is also positive, so you got five positives and one negative, see?
Just because he doesn't like you doesn't mean he doesn't like me. That's not, that's not my problem.
Anyway.
Doesn't like you?
No, he doesn't like you. That's what's hilarious about it.
I like you.
Oh, thank you.
But yes, that is a, that is statement that defies are the second group that Dungeon Protocols has absorbed.
Yeah, I would definitely say that.
Cause we were a a group when we.
Um, yeah, so I think that it's definitely something, if we're gonna do some recruiting, I I think we might as well. Um yeah, and see what's out there, see if there's a couple of small groups who wanna get involved and. Be part of something, you know.
I like Sky's idea too to opening it up to more groups as well, cause that's, I think. That will tap into uh people that, you know, don't have any place to go either and that'll give. Uh a good uh good way for people to find us as well, so I like, I like that idea that she came up with. I'll have to run it. Um I want to.
On the clock, boss.
I wanna try to get to it. Yeah, thanks. Um I'm hoping to get something together soon. Um but like I said, with my current schedule and stuff like that, I need to figure out what that looks like.
Okay, so with Destiny, we have one more season and then we have the um month of triumphs or a month and a half of triumphs, right?
Yes, that we know of, I I don't think that they've said, did they say that they're doing the moments of triumph or the uh? Is that?
They always do.
I know they always do.
They didn't say it last year either and they did it. They do every summer, cause it's, it's a way for people to finish stuff off.
Yeah. We go back to that channel. Get rid of the dead eye bastard. I can put that into the uh the spreadsheet if you'd like, dead eye. That's up to you. Tribute Hall two, oh man. I think that goes hand in hand with getting Vern more coffee. If anybody would like to donate to Vern's um. Coffee uh fund, we would be greatly appreciated.
We can make a GoFundMe.
Not listening, she had to go watch uh Tiger King or something with her boyfriend.
Doesn't mean I can't joke about her.
True. I'm just saying it's not nearly as funny, cause she's not listening.
Okay, um. She left the meeting there. Pioneer will send coffee. I have to get her address, I can, we can send her coffee. Do you, does the chat or does anybody have any questions or comments or anything else that uh? Wait, am I HR? No, Totes is HR and nobody talks to Totes, especially with this, since you got the appendix out.
Yeah, HR is already.
Yeah.
And we're, Mr. Alex is sending energy drinks, Pioneer is sending coffee, I think in earnest. Get some jitters and be able to stay up a little later.
Yeah.
Yes, it's very terrifying, Sky, that Totes is HR. That's why we did it and we figured it would be the best move for the.
Well, you're saying the uh the man that spent years on a boat by himself with a bunch of other men is not a good idea for to be on HR?
Oh, man.
Yeah, I think like Tahoe said, is there anything else? Are you still using Twitter very much Tahoe for Dungeon Protocols? Are you still tweeting out your streams and stuff?
Yes, so every Friday I tweet out that. I haven't used it for much of anything else. Um I don't know how much people, I mean, it still has a crap ton of people that are subscribed to it, but yeah, I do post that. Um every Friday when we do streams and stuff like that, so that is still active.
Have not been using it for.
Um streams are still Fridays at the same time and then I archive those onto the YouTube channel as well, so. Um and there have been some people that have gone and watched themselves, not just Defi, sending me comments about it.
That's funny.
Yes, I have been watching My Hero Academia.
Yes, it's exactly like that.
Okay, so I'm gonna put up on the screen the the version of the app that I've been working on, so you guys can see. This'll be the next. So it'll actually be a web based um version. So. Very simplistic in nature, but it works very much the same way. Um pick games, titles, start dates, it'll actually give you, you know, a calendar, be able to pick from. It'll come up on your screen in the stream if you're watching. Same picker for time zones and stuff like that. So most of the same, most of the stuff is there, it's just been reduced down to a very simplified version because. We uh had to build this all brand new from scratch with no, no backing from the.
Right, no base format.
Exactly, so um it will hopefully work the exact same way, so all of this stuff will get saved. Um I haven't got the publishing to the Discord to work yet. I have to figure that piece out. Um but yeah, it's essentially the same without being as pretty right now.
Can you do it on uh, does it work pretty decently on the mobile?
Yes, it does. It'll work the same way, so it'll open up a website. Um and you can save.
To show us on your phone real quick and show like one handed, operate the app, your other phone one, use a camera just so we can see that.
Yeah, give me one second.
And are you wearing pants?
Negative Ghost Rider.
He didn't hear anything I said, did he?
I heard what you.
I did.
I'm not wearing pants, I told you that.
Yeah, definitely ignoring me.
What are you talking about?
Called focus.
Box green, what the heck are you talking about?
I have an app.
Tahoe, I was totally joking.
Sure. I don't know if I have something to be able to show you that.
You always um.
Nope, I lied.
Put a shot in the the admin channel or whatever in your thing and so people can see it. Later.
Okay, hold on. You guys get to see all the magic workings now. Let's see if it's able to. Our device is connected.
So the other one um that we're currently using, do you have a block of time before it's the license runs out or whatever?
Uh yeah, so it it'll run to the end of the year and then after that it will. I'll end up canceling it and and turning it off. Okay, so you should be able to see that now. So it'll work very similar to. What's going on? Can you see that now, Thunder?
I see nothing.
So. It's all kind of that same, same as what I was showing you on the web based version. It's all similar. I still have a bunch of stuff to mess with it, but this is basically the new format that'll be in and then I can, I'm working on doing colors and. Uh stuff like that, so.
Okay.
Yeah, that will be what the, hopefully the next version is and that will, hopefully then I can use. The money that I'll save on that to put towards something else and and work on things like that, so.
Right.
Cool. Happy times, happy times.
That's what a fancy phone, iPhone, I fancy graphic looks like.
I have, I have all the fancy tools.
Cool, well, I guess um does, is there anything, anybody in the chat wants to discuss? Or anything that you want to notify? I know Tahoe was taking down some notes, trials, raids. Uh D one events, maybe uh an additional clan night uh during the uh longevity of the quarantine.
Well, it's very similar to what we had before, uh.
Dead Eye says Ghost Guy invite me occasionally to his iPhone. The Destiny chat has kind of become another general chat. Um that's true, there's definitely a lot more conversation that happens there and there. I think that Sky, a lot of it is still um. In general Destiny related, but there's definitely a lot generic chit chat in there than there was historically.
Not.
In the times past, so.
I blame Renegade. She jumps from channel to channel with.
Carry her way through every chat. In fact, I don't think she's afraid to just bounce from one to the other.
Right? She opened up the door and then people were just like all over the place and I'm like, well, I don't know what to do about this now. All hell has broken loose.
Okay. That's too funny.
We've done a couple places, uh Bungy dot nets forums, I've always posted there and uh. You know, actively sought people, even sent people, uh you know, hey, you know, I saw you posting looking for a clan. Um stuff like that, so there, um I was looking into Reddit for a little bit. But uh I know the division Reddit was much better put together and structured compared to the other Destiny ones. Uh I know Destiny has a Discord server now that uh has LFG stuff, even Clan LFG. Uh stuff that I've uh contemplated putting on there, but there's like. Hundred hoops you have to jump through in order to be able to get your uh recruitment post on there, so. Those are kind of like the three places that I'm looking to put up. I know. I could post on Twitter as well, we probably won't get as many pulls from that, cause those are just people that already know who we are compared to. Um people outside of that, but I I still think Bungy Net is our best bet for finding people for sure.
So when you do your post, you should say that um it's not just looking for groups, but individuals as well. So that.
Yeah.
Um if it is a single per, you know, one person looking for a clan, they would feel comfortable. Um and not, you know, because they're they're by themselves versus Philly, like they have to already be in a small group.
Right. Um and I know I wanna add the pieces that um Sky had talked about too. Because that'll make people, it'll make our post more inviting as well for.
Hey, um they're wanting to know where they. Hey, um, they're wanting to know where they can see the, what we post.
Uh, I've got it up on the screen right now.
Oh, really? My, I don't see it, so, but my. Computer's been getting stupid all night.
It should pop up for you as well. Um. It should be the same, I've got more requirements down here, so it's, it's two pages long. Yeah, the, uh, it, everything should be, if you guys can see the DPS documents down in the admin. Uh, section on Discord, uh, you should be able to access any of the documents and view them from there.
There you go, Sky.
Um.
Yep, Sky just pointed that out.
Yeah, thank you, Sky, for saying that, um. I try to make sure that all of that's available so people can see it and be like, hey, do you know you? And I'm not saying you, Rachel, don't go in there and check all my spelling. And my grammar and shit like, don't.
You like to promote clan communication, that is a li-. You are a liar, you will make people not wanna not talk. With all your grammar policing.
Yes, the bungle, bungle link and stuff is, should all be in there as well. Yeah, Mrs. Tahoe's not allowed to touch my phone because she uses proper grammar and punctuation. And that's not who I am. Alright, this is, uh, Rachel's last day in the clan, so say goodbye everybody to her, she's. Booting her from everything.
Renegade's getting booted because she's trying to, uh.
She's gonna go through and, and correct every document that I have in the, in the folder.
Gotta make it so that it's view only.
I'll scroll down to the second half of this, you guys can see the second half. It was nice knowing you.
It, it, it could always be just that it's written in.
If I, if she starts.
Language.
If she starts doing all those corrections, uh, you're gonna have to split your paycheck with her and that's just not gonna work.
All the buses, Dante.
That's funny.
There would be cat gifts everywhere. And baby, baby goats everywhere. God damn it.
That would be scary.
This is devolving. We know, we cannot have that.
This shall not be.
Are you boofing at me?
I know, thank you for that. Are you, I don't have anything for you, I don't know why you're boofing at me. I'm still waiting for that channel, you should have access to that one. Unless there's something wrong with the permissions. Please hold. Yeah, nope, you should have access to that, says read messages, read history, so that's for everyone. It's down in the admin section. Baby goats channel, oh my god, another one of baby goats channel.
No baby goat channel, you already have.
Yep, all animals go in one channel.
Yep.
All animals, one channel, it is the animal chan-
That's right.
Metal, do you have anything else that, uh, you wanna go over or? Talk about or, um, anything new you wanna try or do or, same thing for you, mums.
I'm, I'm still waiting for my internet, so that makes it kind of difficult.
You'll be waiting forever for that.
I like to do the raids and stuff like that, I just don't know when we'll be able to.
Right.
So I want everybody else to learn how to do them, so when we can, you guys can just carry us through when we get our little wisp of good internet.
Mr. Alex wants his admin.
Metal, you've been awful quiet, I know you've been a little, uh, been a lot. The metal first, but, uh, how are you with everything, anything you need to or want to discuss?
Um, guys, I don't know, to be honest, I hadn't really. Even thought of Xbox much lately.
Um, how are, how are things going at home? Being home.
Where I'm at personally.
Yeah.
As far as all that and go from there.
Okay.
You've, you've been working at home, right?
Yep.
What's that?
You've been working at home?
I am home this week and next week and then we'll see.
Gotcha. How's it been?
Yeah, I'm not too bad, at least it seems like more people now are taking things seriously.
I know California is in, in the thick of it, kind of like New York, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, it's weird being in Nevada, I mean, the border's right between us, but it feels like. It's spreading out from California and moving out and in waves out from that direction, so it's kind of weird. You keep your people in your own state, Metal, I don't want them over here.
But you can come, you can come over.
You can come, yes, you come visit.
Really pack your family, move. Yeah.
Wait, is Nevada one of the four corners?
Unless anybody has, uh. Unless anybody has something else.
No, I think that's about, about wraps it at the moment.
So did we have a decision about a sub-admin or is that still something somebody's processed?
I think that's something that me and him will discuss, or if anybody else is interested in something like that, then.
I wanna be there, I wanna be there, I wanna be there, I wanna.
We can definitely.
I wanna make all sorts of stipulations and throw lots of shade. I mean, I want to help negotiate her.
That's up, that's up to you, Deffy, I mean, that's, uh, there's no pressure, that's, that's kind of what you wanna do and what you wanna accomplish. And that's kind of, you know, my deal with a smaller group is giving somebody the ability to, you know. Make some decisions or figure out what they wanted to do with a group and, and, and stuff like that and. And, you know, experience that, figure it out, see if it works, see how it goes and stuff like that. Sky's gonna come pester me in person, Sky, you are more than welcome to come sleep on my couch anytime. Just, anybody's welcome to come sleep on my couch anytime, I got a really big fucking couch right now, it's like fifteen feet long.
There, I'm gonna be stuck there for two weeks, so.
Yeah, I've got plenty of room for you.
Pioneer, I'll be back in two weeks.
You're probably the only person on the airplane. In a hazmat suit.
In a hazmat suit.
Prefer the shark or T-Rex, I prefer the T-Rex over the shark, but that's just me.
I'll use that T-Rex suit and I'll shoot my butt.
Yeah, Sky, you can't teach my kids bad things because that's my job. I want your couch.
Like Carson. Alright, well, I'm out of here.
Well.
More serious to discuss because I am hungry and I do believe I have dinner down.
Okay.
And I think my wife might be waiting to eat.
Go get food.
No, but.
Thank you, Thunder. Thank you, mums, thank you, Metal, appreciate it.
Yep. Thanks, everybody for. Hanging out.
I'll hang out for a little bit longer if anybody needs the, anything else, but yeah. Thank you, admin.
Cool. Alright, well, I'm out of here, y'all have a good one and I'll see you guys tomorrow.
Yep.
At Clan Night.
Friday.
Already.
Trials.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.
Good night, you guys.
Take care, Metal.
Night, Metal, take care of yourself. I'm gonna jump into Destiny probably.
Hmm, hey, big fella.
Hi, how are you? This just got really awkward.
Ooh, just the way you lack it.
You make it more awkward.
You invited me to stay under your couch, so.
I did. Your wife, your wife would really love the couch that we have because it's one of those modular ones. That you can break into smaller couches or you can combine them all into one great big one, so. It's gotta be at least like twelve feet long right now in front of the TV. Uh, so we can all sit around and like watch movies and do dumb shit stuff, so it's pretty cool. We used to having fun, trying to. Are we gonna have two dads, two clan dads?
Have a good one.
Maybe.
See you.
Yep.
See you online tomorrow.
See you tomorrow.
Bye.
Bye. I know what it is, I want it, I know, it's.
He wants it sexually real bad.
That's what we.
What are you guys talking about?
That's what. That's what we have, it's, uh, it's expensive, but, um. Like for what we use it for and how we rearrange our. Um, living room all the time, we've gotten our monies worth out of it so easily. Probably one of the best reasons to, uh, refinance your house and get some money to buy one. I don't advise that, that's not, that's not a financial advice, don't do that.
Don't do that, I'm not planning on it.
Bye.
So are you gonna, Tahoe, are you gonna actually talk with Defy as, as Ghost?
Yeah.
We need serious thought or is he just asking?
Uh, we had talked, we've talked about it before, right? Defy, we've talked about that before, um. But yeah, it's definitely something that's on the, that's on the table for anybody if they want, if they want, anybody wants to talk about doing. Doing anything or starting anything or wants to be, uh, uh, backed by anything, um. I'd be happy to, you know, leverage whatever resources I have or leverage whatever. I can to be able to try to make something like that successful, so, uh, whether that is like Renegade's. Uh, gif-y, you know, animal chat, she really wanted that and, and you know, it's been fairly successful and, uh, lots of people love that, so. Um, yeah, anything that people wanna do or anything like that, please, 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 please let me know.
Okay. Alright, good night.
Night, mums. I do need responsibility, no, thank you. Yeah, no, I. Two clan dads would be just fine. Now it's just down to me, so if anybody has any thing else or needs anything else. Mrs. Tahoe, do you need anything? What is your challenge? Songs? Quarantine songs, what does that mean? Songs that represent being in quarantine? I'm so. Oh, okay. I'm doing good, Sky, not too bad with the, uh, everything that's going on, trying to, you know, keep everything stabilized with the kids and stuff like that. They, they started online schooling, so. Mrs. Tahoe wants your best songs that are. How would you put that? Not quarantine based, but. You said Dancing With Yourself was one, what was the next, what's another one? You already have a playlist? All By Myself. Celine Dion, right? Can't Touch This, oh my god. I'm just here for the podcast. Um, you know, Remy still has access to the. Um, I, I don't want to call it the Dungeon Protocols podcast, but the, uh, Warlock School Podcast. Um, they've tried to revive it like two or three times, I know I've done the, the art for it, um, several times, but. Nobody's ever really taken it and run with it, unfortunately, um, I'm hundred percent sure if I asked him for it, he would give it to me. Uh, to be able to do and he would probably even let me keep it on the, uh, Ninja Pancake Network as well, um. It just depends on. Consistency and whether or not I can key, do another project like that and, uh. Get all of that stuff together, but I, I definitely have thought about it a bunch of times, um. I just don't know. I don't know how well I could do it. I'm clan dad, I'm not podcast dad. Don't stand so close to me, police, oh my god. Get rid of that for now. You're, uh, are you waiting for the podcast to happen, Deffy, is that what you're saying? Social distancing? What else do I have on here, oh, I have that, I can put that on there. Go back to our Deffy protocols since Thunder isn't here anymore. Make it really big. Welcome to Deffy Protocols. At Mrs. Tahoe, Long View by Green Day. She's shaking her head, she likes that one. You like the red for the Deffy protocols, I like the red too. I have a, let's look at the rest of my assets here. I have a. Pizza Protocols, the pizza version of Dungeon Protocols. Made that for Bechek back in the day. That was a good one. Yeah, that's that one. I don't think I have any, anything else fun in here for that. Sky thought of that one. She says she grew up on Green Day. Yeah, Mrs. Tahoe says she likes you. You've got good taste in music. Bye, Deffy, thanks for hanging out with us. Sky, check this out. These are my, these are my animals. Bruno Mars lazy, that's funny. Those are my animals, this is Buttons, this is Patch, this is Sora. The best part of this podcast, yeah, what, the? The best part of this podcast, yeah, what, the, the mu- the music stuff or the uh, going through all of my files on my desktop? Music's the best, who says Mrs Tahoe? Uh, that's funny. The files, I love snooping, the music stuff is a lot of fun too. What do, what else do you wanna snoop on? Oh, ha, just, this is all art stuff. Could snoop on some stuff. Oh, you guys wanna see Renegades? I don't know, is she still here, is Renegade still here? You wanna see her book cover that I made for her? Shh, don't tell her I showed you, she might get mad. I had the words on it for a little bit and she didn't like the fonts on them, but it worked out fine. She figured it out. I had to mock up a model just to see where the lighting was coming from, so I had to build a 3D model in uh, Blender. I don't think I have anything else further. Hi, Renegades, what's happening? Nothing, nothing's happening at all. Look, I, I found you some glimmer. Also, there's some glimmer here, some heavy ammo. Early screenshots. Uh, then these are, this is our legal firm. What you doing with those fancy ship pictures? What do you, ship pictures you talking about? I don't see no ship pictures. Into pancake stuff. This was the actual podcast. Image that I made for Warlock School, the newest one, newest version. Show them the Titan picture with the orange. What Titan picture? What conversation, we, we weren't doing anything, we were all being very pleasant and nice here. Talking about. Nothing happened here. I have so many files, we, we could do this all day, there's just so many. In here and each one of them has subfiles and everything else in it. So many things. I do need to figure out, so. Before all of this uh, stuff went on with the quarantine and all that stuff. This is what my, no, that's not, that's not the real picture, where's the real picture? That's what my truck looked like before, it's very similar to the one I got now, I got a new one. And I had stickers on the side of it. So anyways, it looks kinda like this, it had these on it. Crossed here, but I'm trying to decide if I wanna put those back on the new truck or if I wanna do new stickers, something different. Do a Titan Warlock and Hunter Walk into a bar as a podcast title, it's really wordy. Wait, let me ID them, okay? What can you find, what, what can you see? Gundam, obviously, yes. That one's on too. ODST, yep. Yep, Reach is there. This one is also Gundam one, the eight MS team is also. This is what I had settled on for my truck design. What I wanted to do. This is what I wanted to do. I figured that was a little overboard. Borderlands and Destiny, yep. Titanfall two was on there as well. Was one of the stickers on there. Yeah, it's a li- little bit overboard. So I built this one, this image in Photoshop. And I think I sent it to, to Destiny Twitter just for shits and giggles. Which one? That orange one, is that the one you're looking at for Defi? The Titan orange picture in your suit, oh, oh god, man. I don't even know where I have that one at, to be honest. Don't think it's here. No, it's on Borderlands, so that was a prop I made at one point, that's actually real. The one you had in real life, yeah, I'm trying to remember where. Let's me take a minute to find it. You guys get a real breakdown of all of the artworks that are everywhere. There's a, there's an out of works part in there. See if I can bring it up. It's an old one. Cutting for the kiddos. Um, I don't know where I have that picture at, Defi, to be honest, I'd rather bring up the YouTube channel. Oh no, that wasn't a YouTube channel thing, that was a. Shoot, where would I have it, this is all Halo stuff. No, I don't think it would be in here. Maybe, no, that's not it. This is where things get unorganized, this is old stuff. Mural, you guys. You guys wanna see the nail I shot through my finger? I'll get it out of there. Nobody wants to see that. Maybe it's in here. I honestly don't know where I have that picture at, Devi. That might be a Twitter exclusive. No, that's hard work. I, I don't know where that picture is that you were talking about. I wish these were mine, these are not mine, there's something I found, found online. Someday, I'll find it. It's in here somewhere, there's a lot to go through to find stuff though. Like, we just moved, so I went through all my stuff and found something from Reach London Edition that I forgot to look through. It was Doctor Halsey's personal journal, yeah, I love the personal journal, so good. All that stuff that they put together for those was always just awesome, loved it so much. Night, Defi, go get some sleep. We should probably uh, wrap it up there, Sky too, I can show them this, that's, that's me. Let's see, these are all from Halo, these aren't from. I didn't have very many pictures from my other costumes that I built. If you want Halo armor, I can send you it, I've got it in a box in my garage. It's not doing anything, it would look just like that. The uh. And I have all blurry pictures. Friend that was taking pictures was really bad at photos. You beat Master Chief, what did you, why were you beating up Master Chief? They had weapons and stuff too. BR. Nolan Halo. Let's get out of that one. Night, Rachel. Think we're getting down to the nitty gritty here, yep, down to seven. Alright, probably gonna wrap up here. Night Dante, thanks for dropping by. Get rid of Defi stuff here. Alright. You're gonna tell a story, wha- what story we're gonna tell? About when you beat up Master Chief? How did you beat up Master Chief? I went to a con for cop hours to see my friend who was part of a booth there. And we were walking around and found a console gaming room. And several stations were set up with Reach, nice. And there were a couple guys playing already, but I sat down for next match. I think it was three players, FFA, gotcha. And it got to the point that the two of them had to team up to try and beat me, they didn't. As I expect. Ahaha, I found it. There it is. There, now Defi can be happy. So that game ended and Master Chief sits down, I'm assuming he sits next to you. Couple chairs away, okay. What's going on in Discord? So it's four player free for all, got it. Again, you handily win. I wonder if it's somebody I know too, because I, I, I was part of the four or fifth uh. Uh, Halo costuming group for. Oh, a good year or so. Um, might have been somebody that I know. The next game is just you and Chief, oh no. In St Louis? It could have been, cuz we, they are the divisions all across the country. Costuming divisions. I came up with that, that logo, a version of that and then they made it into this later on. Don't know if I have that somewhere. And he sets the next game up super fast because he's determined to beat me. Um, I have a feeling you're gonna school the snot out of him. Um, I have a feeling you're gonna school the snot out of him. And the poor guy loads up SWAT on Swordfish. Oh no, why would he do that? Which was your turf? I believe it. I have a feeling you schooled the snot out of him. It wasn't a contest. Couldn't even let Chief win by default? Dang. Hurt his pride. You hurt his pride. I jumped off the ledge, spun 180 and shot him in the head. Ooh, that's gotta hurt him a little bit. That's funny. I bet he enjoyed that. Really good at spot. It sounds like you were just really good at Halo is what it sounds like. Seems like you were swatting everybody. No matter what they, what you were doing. I was only good in Reach. That was a good game. I liked that one. I like the DMR. That was my, my thing. Two or three hours garbage at. Two was like the main, my main jam because, or maybe it was three, two and three. That's when my buddy got out of the army and we started playing, uh, online with each other and stuff like that. So that was. Basically, it started me down the path to get here, cuz we were, we originally joined Dungeon Protocols together back in the day. And, uh, now just kinda snowballed into what this is now, but. That's funny. Good old Red, Red Fox. Alright. I still think Reach SWAT worsened my ADHD because it made me so twitchy. Yeah. Kinda like playing the playlist today. So twitchy. Just firing, uh, grenade launchers everywhere, hoping to hit somebody. Alright, Sky. I'm gonna get off so I can, uh, say goodnight to my chitlins and hang out with the misses and stuff like that, so. Hey, at least he was nice enough to shake your hand afterwards. Didn't come over and try to teabag you or anything like that. Nice, nice guy. Oh, they were with bagging? Oh my god, please tell me you were bagging, the one bagging. In every game? Nope. Oh. Dang it, Chief. You had to throw down, didn't you? I'm not so crude. The Herald is annoyed with me. Just cuz you're too good. Alright, for real this time. Night, Sky. And anybody else who's still here watching?